Good evening. I'm going to call to order the April 4th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Just for everybody in the audience's edification that Mr. DiPaolo, our Chair, is appearing virtually. So I'm going to be chairing certain aspects of the meeting and turning it over to Ms. Olson as I have some conflicts on certain matters. So next order of business is review and approve the minutes, but we don't have any for this meeting, nor do we have any bills. So I would turn it over to Board Member Comments. Matt, do you have any comments for this month's meeting?
Not at this time, though.
How about you, Dino?
No comments, sir.
Julie?
No.
Herna?
No comments.
Mr. DiPaolo?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. And I have none either. Louise, can we have some input from staff as to events that have transpired since the time of our last meeting?
Sure. So this week, actually, we had a pre-construction meeting for Greenbrier, which is the over-55 site plan approval and special permit that was approved in 2023. So they are looking to start construction within the next month or so. They have their stormwater permit, which will allow them to start site work once they have a site visit with the conservation agent and our stormwater agent as well. I don't have any specific dates, but that is underway. I think that's it for my staff report today.
Okay. Thank you. And next, I would turn it over to Ms. Olson because I have a conflict for the next three hearings.
Okay. Thank you. All right. First up this evening, we have a de minimis modification that has come before us for 384 South Street, NBP 3 Shrewsbury LLC. Is there anyone here this evening?
Thank you. Dean Temple, I'm the architect on the project for representing Repligen, who is the company that's going to move in to the space. Thank you for considering this motion. Do you want me to just kind of describe what's...
Sure.
Okay. So it's pretty basic. They're trying to get relocated from Bill Rickett to their new home here in Shrewsbury. Construction is going to take a little while, so what they'd like to do is set up two, like a group of four and a group of two trailers, work out of there as their offices, get their warehouse up and running, get the racks installed, and just start operating out of Shrewsbury.
That's great.
That's basically it.
Do you have a sense of how long those temporaries will be there?
So I had put six months on the document. I believe that's what Patty told me was your definition of temporary. So, yeah, six months.
Okay. Great. Any questions from the board?
Not at this time.
No questions.
Any questions, comments from the audience? Okay. So we need to take a vote on this to accept the de minimis change or...
Mark, do you have any questions, comments on this?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the only thing I will add, and I know you have had many conversations with Ms. Sheehan, so she's well aware of this application as well, and I think only one thing that she is looking for, which you're aware of, is just the setback to each of the offices?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep. So that will be 20 feet. That dimension got left off my drawing, so apologize for that.
That is the only thing that would be required to be put on the plan.
On the plan, per...
If approved, so.
Okay.
And Louise, I just wanted to thank you personally because you really helped me get through this process, and I know you guys probably don't get thanked a lot, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to accept with the minor modification on the setback? Correct?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Because Mr. DiPaolo is virtual, we have to do a roll call vote, so Mr. Kastner?
Yep.
Mr. Lardy?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
In favor.
Mr. DiPaolo?
In favor.
And Ms. Holstrom in favor. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up this evening is the Continued Public Hearing for 170 Hartford Turnpike, Route 20 Nominee Trust. I believe that has, we have received a motion to continue that hearing this evening, so that'll be continued to the May. It'll be continued to the May hearing?
Yes.
May 2nd at 7:00?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we vote on it?
I'm sorry?
Vote on that.
Oh. So can I please entertain a motion to continue the hearing for 170 Hartford Turnpike?
Motion to continue the hearing.
Is there a second?
April 4th.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Kastner?
In favor.
Mr. Lardy?
In favor.
Mr. Rowe? Mr. DiPaolo?
In favor.
And Ms. Holstrom in favor. All right. Next up, we have the Continued Public Hearing for 142 Clinton Street, 160 Holden Street, LLC. I believe we have some guests here this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Mark Donahue on behalf of... Tilton on behalf of 160 Holden Street, the applicant. Based upon the schedule that we had established some time ago, having a particular topic on each evening that we are meeting, this evening we had agreed to discuss and review sound with you and some other environmental impacts that had been inquired during our first meeting. A couple of words to start. My experience is that sound is often one of the more difficult areas for public hearings. I think a lot of that is because sound is more subjective than some of the other disciplines that we look at, such as stormwater or traffic. What one perceives as appropriate sound can differ by a person or the like. However, despite the subjectivity, there's actually a fair amount of science that involves sound, particularly for facility of this nature, and that science leads to certain things that could be done to mitigate sound to what's, to the sensitive receptors that are in and around the area. And what you're going to hear this evening is a presentation by Mark Wallace, who's here of Tech Environmental, who's done a detailed study with regard to the proposed project and its impact upon the surrounding neighborhood. That presentation's probably going to take 20 or 25 minutes. It is based in science, and I think it's important that the board takes the time to hear the science and try to understand it because I think it frames the issues better than just simply being concerned that something's going to be too loud in some fashion. So with that, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd introduce Mark Wallace of Tech Environmental.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mark Wallace. I'm with Tech Environmental, and we're located in Waltham, Massachusetts. I'm a vice president at the firm, and I'm also the project manager for the sound study. Before jumping into my presentation, I just wanted to notify the board that we did have a peer review of our sound study. He's here tonight. And we've had some good communications regarding some changes to our sound study, which we have revised and submitted a revised report a day or so ago. So I'll talk a little bit about some of the comments that were received on that peer review. In addition, I will also speak later in the presentation regarding what questions on, from the public on sound. And also, I'm here to discuss the concerns about air pollution with diesel trucks. My background is in meteorology as well, and I have 30 years of experience in air dispersion modeling and air monitoring as well, so I cover many facets in that. And then the final thing I will be talking about is sustainability in greenhouse gas. Again, our firm does quite a bit of work in the energy modeling analyses, and we'll discuss the results of that, of those results that were submitted as the MEPA filing with the notice of project change. So with that, first slide. So as was discussed, sound is a very hard thing to sort of understand for the public. This first slide that's presented here talks about sound levels that are measured in decibels and specifically in A-weighted decibels. And that's the sound that we generally hear. So there are frequencies of sound that we focus on, on the A-weighted scale. The slide shows a sort of chart that gives examples of different types of sound. We generally hear sound about in the 30 to 90 decibel range. And sound levels for communicating between two people about three feet away is about 60 to 65 decibels. So that gives you a little bit of perspective where it's a sort of a quiet suburban area might be 40 to 45 decibels at night. The next thing is, as part of our sound study, we compared it to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Noise Policy. As part of that, there are two components to that policy. The first is there's a 10 decibel allowable increase over ambient conditions, and I'll talk in a moment about what ambient means in the policy. And secondly, there's a no pure tone restriction as part of the policy. And the pure tone is something that you would hear if it was a humming sound or a low rumbling sound. Those are types of pure tones that you would hear. But the specific definition by the DEP, we're looking at different frequencies of sound. And if there's a 3 decibel increase when you're comparing the two adjacent frequencies, that's considered a pure tone in the regulation. The next slide. So there are two phases to a sound study. The first is to establish existing conditions. So this shows the site and the locations of the monitoring that we did using sophisticated sound analyzers. The one in the center of the site is where we set up our long-term sound analyzer, so we collected measurements over a one-week period. That was hourly measurements over that one week period, so we collected about 180 hours' worth of measurements at that particular location. And then we did short-term measurements at four additional locations around the site in the neighborhood areas, at Flag Road, and then also at the site entrance and down to the south and to the east of the site on Sewell Street. So those were used to sort of calibrate the long-term monitoring results and making sure that the sound levels that we're using are consistent in the neighborhood as well as at the long, at the site itself. So the sound measurements that we collected are what are defined as the L90 sound level, and that definition is the quietest 10% of a measurement. So we're taking one-hour measurements, 60 minutes. It's the quietest six minutes in an hour. So we're using the very lowest of those values as part of establishing what the ambient condition is, and we're focusing on late-night time periods. So we measured sound levels, as I mentioned, throughout the seven-day period, and we were focusing, you know, at night. The sound levels range from 32 decibels, which is very quiet, quiet urban rural area, and that was measured on a Sunday morning at 1:00 and 4:00 in the morning. And that establishes the ambient condition. There were sound levels generally higher than that most of the time, as you would expect for this type of area. But as far as what the policy establishes, it's a 10 decibel above the quietest time period. So our limit or the facility design is based on 10 plus 32, which is a 42 sound limit. And that's what we're trying to design the project to meet at the residential areas. This next slide is just showing again that same chart that I had in my previous slide. It's just giving you a basis as to what the ambient sound levels are and what the design goals are. So again, the 32 to 61 is what we measured. The limit is based on 42. So that just gives you, shows you that there are sound levels beyond the 42 already that are occurring most of the time. So the next phase of the project is to do sound modeling, and that's done with acoustic models. In the past, we would do that in the early days with spreadsheets and, you know, handheld calculations. Today, we're using sophisticated software to do that. And what we're using is a model called CADNA-A. It's a three-dimensional model that takes into account the ISO 9613 standards. Those standards take into account what, how the sound is dispersed from sound sources. So it takes into account atmospheric absorption, topography, and other structures in the area and looks at how the sound would propagate from the site, from the different sources to your receiver locations. So this particular picture is from our report. It's a, showing the sound sources as well as the receivers. So we had 46 receiver points representing the nearest homes to the project site, and those are those white and black dots that you see representing each of those homes. The other part to those homes is that we looked at the top parts of those structures. If they had a second story, we're looking at the second story of the building because that's where people tend to sleep. And so when we're looking at potential impacts of sound from nighttime activities, we want to look at the upper stories of the buildings. So as far as, this is sort of a busy slide, but what it's showing is that there are a number of sources that we're including in our modeling analysis. The two white boxes represent the warehouses, and the red hash marks represent mechanical rooftop equipment. In addition to the rooftop equipment, we're also including silencers on those rooftop units. Most of them have what they call a three-foot silencer. It's the length of the silencer. The longer the length, the more sound attenuation. So the majority of them have a three-foot silencer on them. If you're, with some of them that are closer to some of the homes, we've put five-foot silencers on those. So they, so that way we're making sure that we're protecting the homes as much as possible, particularly given some of the topography in the area where you might be looking straight at some of the roof sources themselves. The other sources include a red line that drives around the site. That's the truck traffic routes that are moving around the site area, so we included those sources. The red hash-marked boxes represent the loading dock areas, so that's where we had idling trucks in each of those locations. It's hard to see in there, but there's another line in there that represents backup alarms, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. So we had all those sound sources in our acoustic model. In addition, we have, as part of the design, we include four sound walls. One is to, those are shown in the purple lines, and I have a slide after that I can show you more details on. So down on the north side, I'm sorry, and on the south side, there are two sound walls. In addition, there are two sound walls in the center of the project site. And those sound walls are to block the sound from the loading dock areas and any sound that might escape towards Clinton Street and those residences over there. So as part of the compliance demonstration for the noise policy evaluation, the regulated continuous sound sources include the mechanical rooftop equipment, the trucks driving around the site, and we've also included the idling trucks as part of that evaluation. With regards to backup alarms, they're not regulated under the policy. They're under OSHA requirements for worker safety, but we did evaluate them so we can show what the potential impacts are from the backup alarms, and I'll show those results in a few minutes. So the next slide is the proposed sound wall. So this gives you a better perspective of what those sound walls and what their dimensions are. So we have ones to the north, which are on the right-hand side of the project picture. North is going from left to right. And we have a sound wall there that, I can't see it on there, but thank you. Yeah, that's a high, so we have a 25-foot tall wall on the north side with a length of about 300 feet. Then we have two shorter walls in the center of the site that we talked about blocking the loading dock areas that are 10 feet tall and about 115 feet long. And then the fourth one is a sound wall on the southern side, on the left-hand side of the picture, that's 15 feet tall and about 335 feet long. So when we did our sound analysis, we looked at how much we would need to design those walls to make sure we're protecting those neighbors that needed additional sound attenuation. So this hopefully is a little movie slide that shows a three-dimensional, it's a bird's-eye view, and it's going to fly through the site area. So you're coming through from the southeast side of the site, moving towards the site itself. So all the topography in the area that shows you that's been included in the model itself, if you continue, yep. So when we get closer to the site, you can see that there are those white and black dots representing each of the homes as we fly through from the south side of the site. And as we get closer, you can see the two buildings. We have the hash marks representing the rooftop mechanical equipment, and if you just stop there for a second. And I don't know if you can make it up, but there's a gray line right next to the red box area. That's our sound, one of our sound walls there that were included in the model to help protect some of the homes on that southern side of the site. So then, now we're coming up towards Clinton Street, and we're flying over, and you can see the red lines representing the trucks moving around the site and then the rectangular blocks representing the loading dock areas in the center or between the two, between the two buildings. When you're flying through, you can see that we've got all the terrain in here as well as the, these additional receivers. This will turn around and fly back over the site. So this is what we include in our modeling analysis. It helps us to get a better perspective, making sure that we've accurately included the buildings and the sound sources as part of the evaluation. And so this is going to be doing its final sort of fly-through here. Just, again, I was hoping that just we could give the board and the public a better appreciation of what's involved with the acoustic modeling analysis. So this next slide is the future predicted sound levels. So on the right-hand side, again, it shows the ambient sound conditions as they are today with the 42 dBA sound limit. On the right-hand side is the continuous sound sources, what the predicted sound levels are with added to the background sound. So you've got 30 to 42 decibels, you know, so at or below the sound limit. When you add in the idling trucks, we're at 31 to 42 decibels. And so that's the range of sound, but we have in the report the individual results for each of the homes that we can talk about if you have questions about those results. This one also talks about the backup alarms. Just again, to give an appreciation of what the sound levels are, they're ranging from 26 to 42 decibels. So in conclusion, the predicted continuous sound levels comply with the mass DEP noise policy. At each of the locations, when we add in temporary idling trucks, they continue to comply with the mass DEP noise policy at each location. There are no pure tones associated with the project. The predicted transient and intermittent backup alarms are consistent with the sound levels that we're already having for the continuous sound sources. And as you would expect, the sound impacts at locations beyond our sound study would be, would be less than what we're already predicting. So the next slide is the peer review from Noise Control Engineering. So the results of that, there were some clarifications that needed to be done to give them a better understanding of whether we've done our work properly. So we provided some additional information regarding rooftop equipment manufacturers' information, which is a part of our new Appendix B in our report. In addition, in our Figure 3, we've updated that to include the numbering of each of the receptor points representing each of the homes. And in Appendix C, we provided the individual sound impacts at each of those homes as well. There's a new Figure 4 in the report, which has noise contours. So the model also can project what the sound levels are. You can see that visually what the sound levels are. And on Figure 4 of that report, you can see that the sound levels are really tight to the site. So that's a good thing because it's showing that we're doing our job as far as trying to minimize the amount of sound coming from the facility itself. The peer review wanted to know what the uncontrolled and controlled sound levels were, or at least know what the change in sound levels would be with the silencers and the sound barriers themselves, and we're getting up to a 26 decibel reduction at the nearest homes, which is substantial. In addition, we also included the octave band data that I was talking about. And again, that's done at each of the individual sources to determine whether there was any pure tone conditions. So all that information now is in the revised report for the board to review. So even with all these changes, the overall results and conclusions from our previous study have remained unchanged. So I understand there were questions from the public. I think they were back in January related to noise, and so I took it upon myself to at least have answers to those questions. There was one related to transient noise, and I think we've already talked about this, the backup alarms, the fact that they're not regulated under the mass DEP noise policy and really under OSHA requirements. Was a question related to no attenuation to the east of the site. So when we did our sound modeling analysis, there, you know, we were all meeting the limits without having to do any additional sound barriers. But keep in mind, on the east side, which is over by Sewell Drive, there is sound attenuation due to the rooftop equipment. So we have silencers on the rooftops units, so they are getting some benefit related to that. There was a question related to only barriers being in the mid-part of the buildings. As we've already talked about, there are sound barriers being proposed on the northern and southern property lines that were shown in the previous slides. Question related to the barriers do not work. So when we do our acoustic modeling analysis, we're trying to make sure that we're designing the sound walls to be effective and optimize their sound attenuation capability. So it's not just drawing a line and saying this is what, where the barrier should be. We actually do lots of different simulations to make sure we're getting the maximum sound attenuation from the barriers themselves. And there was a question related to sound bouncing off of Newton Pond. The model, as I mentioned before, takes into account different topographic features, including water bodies. And Newton Pond is actually further to the east. So the modeling we did were for those receivers on the west side of Newton Pond, and so there would be no sort of sound reflection related to that for those particular homes. The final question was related to construction noise, why it wasn't evaluated. So construction noise is not regulated under the mass DEP noise policy and is considered temporary. Contractors are typically required to minimize their noise impacts through sound mitigation measures, and these are some of the things that I've proposed in the past on other kinds of construction sites that I've worked on that include, you know, making sure that scheduling work during normal work hours, the use of mufflers on equipment, and doing ongoing maintenance of that, of those pieces of equipment. of that, of those pieces of equipment. If additional enclosures needed for certain types of pieces of equipment, those should be included in there as well. You know, scheduling activities, you know, that are noisy, try not to have them going on simultaneously, turning off all idling equipment. Again, making sure you're meeting that Massachusetts limitation, idling up to five, no more than five minutes. Then also locating noisy equipment as possible, as possible away from, from neighbors, installing site barriers on certain locations if necessary, identifying and maintaining truck routes to minimize traffic through, you know, again, through the neighborhoods, replacing specific construction techniques by using less noisier ones, and finally maintaining all equipment to have proper sound attenuation devices. So that concludes my presentation on sound. This next slide talks about exhaust diesel, diesel truck emissions. So EPA is always setting up new standards, and they're periodically reviewing those. In 2007, they had come up with emission standards for trucks specifically to reduce air pollution emissions. Those have been in place since 2010. So those standards reduced air pollution emissions by 90% from back in 2007. So we're now in 2024. EPA has now released out as of December of 2022, new truck emission standards, which under fall under the Clean Truck Plan, to reduce air emissions, starting with the model year 2027. And those are anticipated to be 80% stronger than the current standards. And that's part of the reason for that is the fact that they're also including a certain percentage of them to be electric vehicles as well. In addition, we did air calculations as part of the MEPA notice project change for trucks themselves, using an EPA model called MOVES. It's an emission factor model. So that model takes into account any kind of changes in standards over time. So we did projections of diesel emissions for the current year, this time period, as well as into the future, I believe, 2030. And so what we're seeing is a significant reduction in diesel particulate emissions during that time period, again, because of the new standards that are oncoming. And in addition, the model takes into account the population of, of vehicles. So it takes into account that there's going to be older vehicles that are going to be coming off while newer vehicles coming on. So in addition to the standards, you've also got cleaner vehicles being incorporated into the, the general population of vehicles. And finally, as we talked about, the Massachusetts anti-idling law is, you know, you can't idle for more than five minutes. And that, again, minimizes noise impacts from the site, as well as air quality impacts from, from truck exhaust. This is my final slide related to, as I mentioned, energy sustainability and greenhouse gases. So we have been involved with greenhouse gas projects since the inception of the Global Warming Solutions Act back in 2008. We've probably done over 200 projects related to making sure that projects meet the requirements of that regulations. So there's a building code, and then there's a stretch code. And there was a new stretch code that came into play in 2023. And what we work with our clients on is trying to make sure you're at least meeting those stretch code requirements or doing better than that. MEPA is usually trying to push clients to do better than what, you know, what they may want, may, may or may not want to do. So for this particular project, we're talking about high-performance building envelope. So more insulation walls, better windows and roofing materials, higher efficiency air source heat pumps for the office spaces. So there's a certain code for the air source heat pumps. We're telling them to do 10% better than that. As far as the warehouse space, they will be a hybrid system. So they'll primarily work probably 90% of the time as electric units, but during cold winter periods, they may need to sort of goose up the, the, the heating and that. So they'll have that option to do that. Electric storage tank hot water systems, that's a popular item. LED lighting in both interior and exterior. And the code requires at least 10% of the passenger vehicle parking spaces be EV-ready. But the proponents also committed to doing 10 EV charging stations at each building, so going beyond what's required by the code. And finally, designing or designating 80% of the flat roof areas, available flat roof area spaces as solar-ready spaces. So, you know, in the future, if they decide to put solar panels on them, they can, they can do that as well. So with all those new or additional design features, we're doing 12 to 14% better as a, beyond the stretch code requirements. So we get a much smaller carbon footprint for the project itself. And so that ends my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. I know that we do have someone here that did conduct the peer review. Do you have any items that you'd like to bring up as, as part of this?
I think it might be useful just to go over, just a quick overview of what the peer review process involved. I largely, you know, I've communicated with Mark, and we've gone over points. So we're pretty much in agreement at this point in the process. So very briefly, my name is Zachary Weiss. I'm from the firm Noise Control Engineering, which is based in Billerica, Massachusetts. We were hired to conduct the peer review on behalf of the town. So we reviewed the report. Generally, we want to make sure that the methodology is sound and that the results, both the inputs and outputs into the model, all make general sense and seem with, seem plausible. We're not hired to reconduct the entire noise study and model the results ourselves. So our, basically, we reviewed the report in detail, and we wrote up a four-page memo, which was both intended for tech to be able to take and make some modifications to the report, and then also to help, just give our interpretation to the town, maybe to either say, hey, we agree with this, and also for this reason, or maybe we want to split this hair just for your understanding. So in terms of changes to the report, or our general opinion of the report was that methodology is sound, we don't have any issues here. We would like some more information just to complete our review. Most of that information was in, just more information on how the source levels were determined for the model, and then also a little more detailed information on what the results were. So after we submitted this memo to the town, pretty shortly afterwards, tech gave us the draft revised report. They addressed all of the items we brought up in, in the review. Because there was quite a bit of new information involved, we had a few follow-up questions, which were generally, some of the numbers provided in the appendix needed some revision because they didn't jive with some other numbers. And then we just wanted a little more detail on the implementation of the silencers. But largely, so we did that review, then we talked with tech about these points. They submitted a final version of that draft. And then we confirmed that all of our items were resolved, and that we had no further notes that we wanted to see addressed in the report. I guess it might be of a little value to know, like, maybe some of the interpretive clarifications we put in. One thing I wanted to put in the report is, I wanted to distinguish between the, just generally, a general nuisance condition and meeting the criteria. In the way I like to split this hair, it's outside of the scope of noise consultants to say, you will not be bothered at all by the noise, you will not hear the noise. We can't do that so much. People can be bothered by something that is very unreasonable to actually put into a, into a criteria, or very, would prohibit any development to put into a criteria. So we wanted to make sure the report was saying it meets the criteria as stated. And then, as to the point of mass DEP not covering transient noise, I think I have not personally seen mass DEP, like, a document that actually addresses this issue. So we wanted to leave it in the hands of the town, whether they wanted to contact mass DEP. Typically, transient noise, such as the backup beepers, are not assessed in this type of situation, but it's unclear just from reading the regulation whether that is the case. So those were probably the main points we wanted to bring up for the town's information. Yeah, and I think that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any comments, questions from the board?
On, on the point that was just mentioned about the transient noise and mass DEP, I, I, I think if it's something that mass DEP is going to address or some way express some concerns on that, that would be part of the MEPA comments, I would assume, you know? So hopefully, if that comes out soon, we can take a look at how, in what way mass DEP is commenting on the noise aspects. So that would be helpful.
Yeah, the criteria is not well-designed to be applied to transient noise, so that should be stated.
Yeah, yeah. I'm also, yeah.
I'm just curious to gauge the dBA. The god-awful thun, um, snow thunder that we got last night, how many DBAs are compared to?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Snow thunder.
Oh, snow thunder?
I mean, it was like, the, I don't know if anybody heard it, I mean.
No.
It was loud.
You know, thunder is, you know, is an atmospheric condition, obviously. I haven't taken specific measurements of, of thunder activity, so I can't really say, but, you know.
Would it be like 200, 300 DBAs?
No, it wouldn't be that. It wouldn't be that at all. I think it would probably be something that was, you know, 100 or less.
Okay.
If I might, the, the first slide that, that Mr. Walls used had some examples of uses, so you could try to equate the thunder to, you know, a train horn.
Okay.
You know, that's a point of this, about 105 decibel. So, you know, it's, it's either around there or less or more, depending.
It really depends, obviously, where the thunder is happening, right? If it's happening right overhead of your house, that's one thing. If it's happening in the distance, it's a different type of sound. Sound, you know, the thunder travels, you know, you know, under different frequencies of sound through the atmosphere, so it can be.
I just wanted to gauge a big, a truck backing up versus, you know.
Sure.
Nature's sound.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, you know, there, there is in our chart here that shows that, you know, that the, there's a tractor combined at 50 feet away, about 85 decibels.
Okay. You perhaps may have said this, but I, I missed it. When was the sound study investigated?
Yeah, so that was done on July 25th through August 1st of last summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Has there been any thought of, like, doing, like, a, a revisit of it? Or I, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, your, your environmental considerations at that point. You know, you have some, some green space, greenery in, at that point and during that time, so.
So, yeah, so, you know, obviously, you know, when we do these studies, we don't get to choose the time of year when you do them, right? Obviously. So one of the things that we're always cognizant of, particularly during the summer months, is insect noise. Because they can jive up the sound levels as much as 10 decibels higher. So when we did our analysis for, you know, for the summertime period that we're talking about here, we also screened out insect noise, if, if it did show up in the high-frequency sound levels. So what you're basically doing is subtracting that sound altogether out of that. So you're actually lowering the sound levels, which would be more probably representative of a sort of annual average, rather than being concerned that we've now captured a higher ambient condition, which then, in the, you know, in, in the wintertime, could be lower. And then you're trying to figure out why was, why was that big difference, you know, when you actually do a, a sound test.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just like to highlight this point, that the easiest way a consultant could try to obfuscate things would be taking summer measurements with insects and not filtering them out. And if there were insects present, those levels would be probably in the low 40s rather than 30s.
Right.
So the, you know, one of the key things we were making sure in our review is that 32 dBA is an acceptable or conservative quietest hour, which it is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and the other thing just to keep in mind is the quiet six minutes that we're talking about as well, so out of that time period.
Sure, okay. And just kind of switching gears a bit to the sustainability side of things, has there been any other kind of thought, investigation of other potential opportunities or options to further incorporate more environmental or sustainable measures on the exterior of the building? Or like in the, in the landscaping side of things?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that can be done. I think we're always looking for sustainable things like, you know, drought-resistant plants and trees, that type of thing, so that they, you know, you want that green foliage to be in, you know, greenery to, to, you know, keep the carbon footprint, you know, as small as possible.
In addition, we have incorporated two rain gardens at the entrance of the office, as well as a TPO white roof to help with solar glare gain on the roofs. Incorporated more landscaping in the parking areas, as our comment back from the MEPA analysts in the ENF filing. So those are a couple of other things.
That's great. Any other questions from the board?
No.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open it up to members, oh, oh.
What, Mr. DePaolo?
Sorry, Mo, I forget that you're there. I can't see you on the screen. Mr. DePaolo, do you have any questions or comments this evening?
Yes, thank you. I, I just have one. How are you able to segregate the noise from this project and noise coming from other operations? If there are other businesses around, like, you know, we know we have a sand and gravel pit a little ways up the road, we've got, with the parks, all their buses. I'm just curious how you're really able, once the operation's in place, to be able to segregate exactly where the noise is coming from?
So we're doing this ambient sound monitoring program. It's taking into account all different types of sound sources, as you mentioned, in the Those sound levels are all captured in the measurements that we do, but the focus of our analysis was looking at the L90 sound level, which is the residual sound or the lowest ambient sound condition, which tends to, tends to screen out other transient noise that might be coming from, say, another quarry activity or some other kinds of, you know, sound sources in the area. So, you know, for the purposes of our analysis, we're, we're at least screening out a lot of those different sound sources, unless they're very continuous sound sources, in which case we'll capture that, and that's part of the ambient conditions in general anyways.
Okay, can I ask one more question, Julie?
Certainly.
But how much does weather affect the way noise travels or dissipate it or make it more intense with the winds or whatever? And just the weather in general, how, I mean, if the wind's blowing in one direction, does it change the noise level enough that, say, people in the east are going to hear it less than people in the west, and in the west, if the wind changes, vice versa?
Well, there certainly will be some changes, you know, due to wind conditions, but as part of the acoustic modeling that we do, you know, we're looking at nighttime conditions. And we're looking at, there's always a possibility, what we call an inversion, which is a capping of the atmospheric conditions, which then makes the sound travel further away. So we've accounted for that in our modeling analysis, to be conservative that we're going to, we're assuming that there's going to be some type of cap or inversion while we're propagating that sound. So there is, yeah, so the, the sound can move around, but in the purposes for our evaluation, you know, we've already looked at the most conservative sort of weather condition.
Okay, Julie, I'm sorry, I have one more.
Sure.
Um, give me a second, because it just flew out of my brain. Um, I, I can't remember what it was. If I, if I remember, I'll, I'll ask again. Thanks.
Okay, no, not a problem, not a problem. All right. All right, at this time, I'd like to open it up to comments, questions from the public. I just ask that if you are to come and speak this evening, please make sure to speak loud for everyone in the audience to hear. Please give us your name and your address.
Hi there, Krista Dupre. I had actually reached out to the town a couple meetings ago, to the town manager's office. We had asked for a podium, so we're not speaking to the back of everyone here at the table. And I was notified that was going to be up last meeting, and it hasn't appeared yet, that the podium was going to be placed over there, so we can actually, and, as well as GFI doesn't have to turn around and look at us when they try to answer us. So I don't know if that can be done tonight. Thank you.
Not certain. I think that there's some technology components that need to be attached. We'll make sure that that's addressed for the next meeting. I apologize. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Hi, Andy Barnes, one fifteen Clinton Street, Shrewsbury. So the way that you guys are measuring the sound modeling depends specifically on the topology, right? Because, I mean, like, if you yell across the canyon, the sound travels more than if you yell up to a mountain, right?
The modeling takes into account topography, yes.
Cool, good. And I think we could all agree that, like, a forest with no leaves, sound travels more than a forest full of leaves.
If it's a deep forest, it does, you know, leaf, can, leaves can attenuate some of the sound, but it has to be a sort of a deep forest. It can't be just a row of trees.
Okay. Because right now, and also, sound is three-dimensional, right? Travels outward in a sphere in all directions from where it gets sent off, unless it's like a siren pointing in one direction, right?
Sure.
Okay. So, a couple things about where you guys measured and where the current sound walls are. First of all, my, my house is actually up on top of a steep hill, right above the market there. And according to the map, the closest marker to my house, now I am not the closest house, right? So you did, you did get the closest house, but the closest house is in front of my house that is much further down a hill, right? So I am unobstructed, as opposed to some other things that are obstructed. So that's one part. And then the other part is, there is currently a mountain of dirt in front of what is going to be a parking lot, that's like half the size of Ward Hill, right? So if, I'm assuming that's not actually gonna be there, when you guys have a flat, open parking lot with no trees in front of it. So if the current sound modeling is on the current topology, then the topology will change significantly, and our entire neighborhood is currently being blocked by that massive mound of dirt. So, I'd be interested to know how that would change the numbers.
So, appreciate the comments. So, the first thing I should mention is that, in addition to doing the surrounding topography of the area itself and the homes, we're also using the final grade plans that are provided by GFI and their civil engineer. So we're using the final grading plans of the future design of the project. So we're not taking into account any shielding from that mound of dirt from the project. With regards to, you know, the homes themselves, as I mentioned, we're taking the elevations of each of those homes and then looking at the second story of those homes, if you have a second story to.
I'm still, I'm, I'm, I'm two houses above the second story of the first, first house that you guys met.
Yeah, I mean.
Much higher.
So, again, I have to look and see where your particular location is, but we take into account the elevations and, and the, as I said, the height of the, height of the homes themselves, so. You know, so, when we're doing the acoustic modeling, it's looking at each of those sound sources, calculating the sound from each of those sources to each of the receivers, and then summing all that energy from all the sources that's coming from the site.
But all those receivers are basically like road level.
So, you, I do.
Mr. Barnes, if you have questions, I ask that you just come back up, just so that we can make sure that it's captured on the, thank you.
My bad, sorry. It looked like all those sensors were basically the same elevation as the road. And when I say the road, I mean Route seventy, right? So, there's, that entire neighborhood is, like, there's, there's houses at the road, but there's actually many more houses up very steep hills right behind that, right? And I would imagine, I mean, like, I, I like look down onto the top of where that would be. I would, I would, and, and also, if the number is higher by one decibel, it's outside of your numbers, because your numbers go from saying that ambient noise that, right now, is thirty-two decibels,
Right.
right? And we could be within the range of forty-two, right? So if it's forty-three, that's outside of the range of what is acceptable under mass DEP. So, I'm just saying, like, sounds like maybe my house might be out of that range. I would love to know, right? And it sounds like the current modeling doesn't say that, and it's not just my house. There's a whole bunch of houses that are at that same area, that same level. And I had the same question about, you know, we kind of addressed Newton Pond echoing, right? But it was like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're wondering about how much the sound is passing of Newton Pond echoing, I mean, like, I, I grew up going to my grandmother's house on a lake all summer long, and you can, like, hear parties across the lake, clear as a bell, right? So I would wonder about getting some sensors on the opposite side of the lake, because that, that whole lake is gonna hear what's going on there, and there were a few sensors that were essentially like on this side of the lake. What about on the opposite side of the lake? That's what I would be curious as well.
Again, we were looking at it from the closest receivers to the home, so, you know, if you're, if you're having, if you're meeting the limits and you're, and based on the sound projections, further away from the site, you're gonna be, it's gonna be even less than that.
Yeah, dependent upon topology. I get, I get with the idea of a flat lake. But, I mean, like, you can imagine a scenario where the closest person is essentially behind a natural sound wall, whereas the further person away is not blocked by that natural sound law, or sound wall, and therefore can hear things much more clearly than the one who's physically closest, right?
Right. So, a couple of things. First, we're, we're doing our analysis based on the conservative thing of thirty-two, right?
Yep.
Which happens at one o'clock in the morning, and I think generally, the rest of the time periods that we're talking about in our report shows that the sound levels are significantly higher than that. But we're using the worst case, you know, lowest conservative number to be, to be as protective as possible when it comes to the noise from the facility. So, even though you're, there could be sound that bounces off of that pond, during the daytime, the ambient sound conditions are just gonna be higher, that you're not gonna necessarily hear the facility.
Right, yeah, I guess, I'm less worried during the middle of the day, right? I'm more worried at night, when I wanna have my windows open, and beautiful summer breeze.
Mr. Barnes.
Crickets.
I apologize. We have to keep this to questions and not keep it as conversational. I apologize. But if there are questions, I'd like to have them addressed by everyone this evening. Are there any other questions or comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, Rachel Missel, twenty-three Cypress Ave. I wanted to first thank you for having this screen with the transcript. That's really helpful, because in all of the town meetings, I find it very difficult to hear. I also want to thank Krista for asking for a podium, because I really don't like talking to the backs of people's heads. And so, again, apologies, guys, I'm gonna talk to the back of your heads. So, a few things. First of all, modeling is just that. It's modeling. It is not necessarily indicative of what the real-life experience of the neighbors is going to be. I'd like you to keep that in mind. Quit Googling while I'm sitting here listening. An idling truck is eighty-five decibels at fifty feet. A backup alarm is ninety-seven to a hundred and twelve decibels. And when we're talking about these noises, it sounds to me like what we're talking about is within the range of the warehouses. We're not talking about the sound of trucks coming up and down the roads. And based on the number of trucks that are anticipated to be coming in and out of these warehouses, it looks like there's gonna be about a truck every five minutes, if we sort of average it out over twenty-four hours. And we do know that, that there is the possibility of these trucks coming in and out twenty-four hours a day in these warehouses that were originally proposed to be research buildings. So, given that that's the case, I also want to share my own personal experience in the neighborhood. Now, I'm not super close to Worcester Sand and Gravel. I live just down the street from the high school. And during the winter, the sound from two ninety is much louder than it is during the summer, when the trees have leaves. Now, with the addition of these warehouses, my home is going to be sandwiched between twenty-four-seven noise from trucks and backup alarms, and the noise from the highway. In addition to that, we have the One Greenbrier project, which has, by the way, already drained the wetlands, and they will be cutting down trees. So, the amount of sound that's going to be impacting my neighborhood's homes, which is farther away from this project than some of the other neighbors here, is going to be much greater. So when I, what, the reason I bring this up is that I want you guys to consider the bigger picture here. We're not just talking about the impact of this project. We're talking about a much more global impact. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration. I also want to take this opportunity to remind the board, to remind every board, to remind everybody that I can, that the town of Shrewsbury declared a climate emergency in 2021. Think about that. We declared a climate emergency. This town decided that climate, that the climate crisis was so bad that we needed to declare a climate emergency. And since then, we have adopted a climate action and resiliency plan to help mitigate the impact from the municipal government. Now, I think this needs to be taken into consideration as well in the big picture. What are we approving? Why are we approving? And is that okay? The particulate matter that's gonna be generated from trucks, which you addressed, that's gonna affect the wetlands. It's also gonna affect the air quality for at least half a mile. I've got so much more that I could speak to. Just because a sound is not regulated by DEP doesn't mean it doesn't keep people awake at night. And the other thing I'd like to ask the builders is, you've decided to do a hybrid with gas. Now, gas is notorious for leaking, causes asthma in human beings. You've got this solar-ready rooftop, and I would urge you to not use gas, to go straight to solar. Selco has committed to going net zero by 2032, which means you'd be using some of the cleanest electricity around when you're not generating electricity with your solar panels and helping the town get to net zero, helping Selco reach its net zero goals. So, I'm gonna step back and let other people speak now.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the public?
All right, good evening. I'm Paula Tebow at one twenty-one Clinton Street. And I do have a question and then some comments. And my first question is for the planning board, and whether you will wait for a determination by MIPA and confirmation of compliance with any requirements regarding the draft environmental impact report before making any final decisions on the project.
I don't think that that's something that we've, we've discussed. I actually did have a note to get an update. I know at our last meeting, it was discussed that you guys were going back in to MIPA. Has that filing occurred?
It has.
Okay. And has, has there been a timeframe set on that, in terms of, I know that there's usually typical timeframes for that information to be kind of turned around. Do you have a sense of what that is, or?
I don't have the specific here. I don't know if you have the timing, but, you know, it's time, the public comment is still open.
Until April twenty-second for public comment, in case anybody wants to comment.
So I don't think that there'll be any decisions made before the end of the public comment period. Certainly, we're, you know, at the end of this hearing this evening, we'll have another hearing next month to further discuss. So I think we need to kind of see where the MIPA process stands at that point as well.
Thank you. My comments are about the draft environmental report, and I did spend some time trying to research it. It is a very big application and difficult to get through. I did have several concerns, but I'm only going to address two tonight, just in the interest of time and everybody's, you know, making time for everybody else's questions. So, I did have one point that I wanted to address, where the developer states on page eighty-seven that the project will have a measurable impact on the surrounding communities, though none will have a disproportionately adverse effect on the EJ communities within the designated DGA. This brings up two issues. First, it is clear that the project will have an impact on the community. And I think the planning board will need to make sure to acknowledge that and determine whether the project truly aligns with the criteria for approval under the bylaws. And second, the statement conflicts with the 2023 Environmental Defense Fund report, which states, "There is an overburden for neighborhoods of color and low income being disproportionately burdened by air pollution and warehouse locations." Specifically, they cite Massachusetts as one of the states where the concentration of minority residents around warehouses is double what would be expected, given the population of the state. This project is located in a designated geographic area, where the environmental justice policy applies due to two types of environmental justice blocks. In Shrewsbury, it's under the minority criteria, and in Worcester, it's under the minority, income, and English isolation criteria. A 2022 publication in the Journal of Transport Geography describes study results, which revealed significant association between warehouse activity and air pollution, noise levels, and traffic collisions. Warehouses provide few benefits to the surrounding community. Although supporters often tout improved employment opportunities as benefit of having warehouse close by, their jobs that provided are tend, they tend to be transitory and low-paying. Cities have long targeted low-income and minority neighborhoods for industrial zoning. Environmental and traffic impacts associated with warehouses can negatively, have negative consequences on the local surrounding communities, making warehouse sitting an important environmental justice issue. Heavy-duty trucks transporting goods to and from warehouses are a major source of air pollution. Living in proximity to warehouses brings other negative effects as well, including traffic congestion, traffic collisions, road wear and tear, light and noise pollution. And then my second point about the draft environmental report is that I, excuse me, I am concerned that GFI has partnered with the Kennedy Community Health Center to, quote, "navigate public health impacts correlated with this project and find pragmatic solutions." This is on page two thirty-nine. And the goal of the partnership is to, quote, "identify an appropriate plan of action to support those most vulnerable to the ailments identified by the Massachusetts Department of Health," end quote. While the partnership is very admirable, the impact to public health can be avoided by not permitting the warehouse directly in a neighborhood that is completely surrounded by.
by homes without proper distancing to mitigate this harm. In closing, I will just highlight the twenty-twenty-three report from the Environmental Defense Fund, which states, quote, "While warehouses provide economic opportunity and jobs, companies and policymakers must do more to safeguard community health and reduce the impacts of truck-related air pollution," end quote. I request the planning board take this into consideration as part of the criteria for special permit approval according to the bylaw, where the project needs to be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, and will promote the purpose of the aquifer protection overlay district, noting that the purpose of this section of the bylaw is to, quote, "promote and protect the public health, safety, and welfare by protecting aquifers and recharge areas, serving an existing or potential public water supply from contamination." I respectfully request the planning board also use Shrewsbury's master plan to guide decision-making for compliance with these bylaws. Several pages of the master plan conflict with the proposed project, and I'll just end by quoting one of those pages, which stated, "By protecting the northwest corner of Shrewsbury, which is over the town's main aquifer, the town can implement groundwater protection and conservation efforts. The property can be used for passive recreation." Uh, thank you for indulging me and your time.
Anyone else from the public this evening?
Karen Bokinki, one forty-one Sewell Street. My first question was, um, will there be a peer review? So, apparently there was, but I don't think it's right that the public does not have access to that peer review until we get to the meeting. So, we haven't had time to look at it and review it and comment it. We have to kind of try to absorb it as we're presented with it. And the same thing happened with the traffic study peer review. The peer review was not posted for any of us in the public to see before we came to the meeting, and I think that we should be able to have access to that prior to the meeting.
Are the peer review items posted on this, the town website?
They are. I'm checking right now to see which ones are up. But overall, they are always all uploaded.
And how would you say that they're, I mean, I know especially, I recognize that the peer review, um, well, the update from the peer review was just received this week, but, um, you know, they are available online.
After the fact, though. They're after, after the meetings. After the traffic, um, meeting, it was posted like the next day. So, we, it was not posted before the meeting.
Okay.
And we'll try and work on that. I mean, sometimes it just depends on the timing of when it's received and, and when we get comment back. Um, it's.
Can I ask when it was done?
Um, uh, March twenty-first.
You didn't do the peer review until the twenty-first of March?
Yeah.
Right? And was it submitted in, at that time?
Submitted on the twenty-first. Uh, I think text update was on the twenty-sixth.
But I think we're okay with it if we see it a day before, as long as we don't have to come here and then we hear it and we're trying to, you know, listen to a presentation and then try to absorb what's in the peer review. So, I, uh, respectfully request that we see those documents ahead of time so we can be prepared.
Understood.
Uh, just one question about the sound study, and, um, it's in regard to, uh, I didn't see anything about generators being provided to these, uh, two sites, these two buildings. Is there gonna be generators?
Ten.
Ten.
Oh, the ten, oh, okay. So, we don't have that information. Um, they're gonna be tenant-specific. The generators, um, need to go through a environmental, um, review process, the ERP through MAST DEP. Um, and with that, within that process, they're supposed to be evaluated for noise and air quality.
So, are there generators for these buildings?
There are presently no generators shown. It may be a situation in which a tenant desires to have a generator, either for their operation or otherwise. And I think what Mr. Wallace is indicating is that's subject to a further regulatory review.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I guess that would be a design change if there's generators and they'd have to factor that into, uh, the sound study?
I don't believe that that, that would be something that, what they are saying is any generator that is put in place, there's a chance that perhaps this development goes forward without any generator being put in place. This building is built, say, and the tenant comes in and says, "I don't need a generator." That's it. If they go through and say that they need a generator, the tenant of the building, not the, the builder of the building, will need to go through a, a permitting process for that generator.
Okay. Um, I have a couple other questions that are not related to sound. Hoping that's all right. Um, one of them was, um, we had a discussion about, um, how many stories the warehouses were, and I had said, um, during, um, one of the questions that it was four stories, and GFI said it's only a one-story building, forty-eight feet high. So, it is on your maps that, um, on the zoning conformance map, it's listed as, um, four stories in several places. So, just, um, a note to that. That's why I thought four stories, uh, and it's still in the documents. And then I had another question about, um, the stormwater, stormwater management analysis. Under the pre-development, it states there's a hundred and eighty-seven loading docks, uh, and later on, it states there's a hundred and eighty loading docks, and there's some drive-through doors for the trucks. So, there's two different designs there. Not sure if that's a design change or if that's just, um, not noted.
I, I can't speak to that.
So, the DEIR states a hundred and eighty-seven loading docks with seven drive-through doors, and also states a hundred and eighty docks with seven drive-through. So, it's not consistent.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, I can speak to that. The draft DEIR is a three-hundred-and-fifty-page document. Likely, we, we missed one of the one-eighty-sevens. Um, our consultant was confused on if a drive-in door is technically a loading dock. Drive-in doors are not meant for trucks to pull into their building, they're meant for forklifts to pull into the building. Um, there's a hundred and eighty docks shown on our latest site plan. That's what we're proposing with seven drive-in doors, which are located on the corners of the building. Sorry for the confusion. Uh, additionally, um, yes, I noted at the last planning board meeting that the zoning conformance table on one of the site plans still says four stories. Uh, we will be submitting a revised plan set, um, next week to respond to the Graves engineering comments, and that will be updated. These documents are very large, uh, plans change, and we apologize for the inconsistencies.
Well, I know how large they are, so that comes, um, to my last question and comments, and it's about the DEIR, which was posted on the monitor on, um, I believe it was March twenty-fourth. Uh, so the DEIR is one massive, huge document, and then there's, uh, I think about twenty-seven attachments, which are not quite so big and easily managed and easily gone through. So, um, I had a terrible time trying to get through it, and eventually, um, GFI provided me with a hard copy as well as dividing the document into three separate documents that were more easily gone through and used. And that's fine, I appreciate that. Um, the only problem today is that on the monitor, that massive DERR is still there. So, if people want to go there and read it, it's just about impossible to get through it. So, I'd like to ask if that's gonna be changed, and if it's not, and even if it is, I think that we need to have an extension to the period where we can comment because there's been ten days.
Unfortunately, ma'am, that, that is something that is done through the state. That's Massachusetts environmental, that's, that is their process, the environmental monitor. They manage that, and that is not anything that the town or GFI has, um, control over, and they have set timelines by which they have the stuff open. Unfortunately, I certainly understand that, you know, there, these documents are large and can be a bit unwieldy. It, but that, there's nothing that this board or GFI can do to kind of fix the state's website to make those more, uh, you know, I guess, accessible, like, that's.
That doesn't make sense to me. I'm sorry.
Well, who submitted the document to them?
GFI submits the document to the state.
Okay, so I guess the point, I guess the point is that it was not user-friendly when it was submitted, so perhaps they can re-admit.
I do think that this is something that is more, a, a, not an issue with the, the filing that was put in by the project proponent. Um, I, I think if you were to look at any environment, draft environmental impact report on that website, you will find everyone is like that. They are very, by nature of what they are, they are unwieldy. They are long, they are technical, um, and it's, it is based upon the requirements that the state puts forward for these. So, I, I mean, that's, it's just a product of, of what the state is requiring for the
I have one more question. I'd like to ask if the DEI hard copy has been delivered to the library?
Yes, at, uh, three-thirty this afternoon. There's also one at Town Hall, and, uh, as the neighbor mentioned, I've sent hard copies to a few of the abutters at their request.
Any other comments this evening?
So, at the last meeting, I want to say thank you very much for putting that up because it helped immensely, um, night and day. So, thank you very much. Um, it was brought up today about, uh, trucks idling and the noise, and I believe it was mentioned that they can only idle for five minutes. Is anybody gonna monitor that? And the reason I bring that up is because, coincidentally, I was actually driving down two ninety with my son, who's, has his learner's permit, and in the left lane, it says, "No tractor trailer trucks." Well, three tractor trailer trucks pass us on the left. So, my point is, you can say that they're not gonna idle for five minutes, they probably will. Um, I'd also like, I don't know how to, um, how do I submit a document to the board?
You can just.
So, uh, so there's a document that I found that says, "Making the invisible, visible," and it says, "Shining a light on the warehouse truck air pol, air pollution." And it was done by the Environmental Defense Fund, and I'll just read one quick par, one quick, two sentences. Because this, uh, this is in regards to idling. "The less visible air pollution is, the more dangerous it may be. Freight trucks make up around ten percent of the vehicles on the road, but they're responsible for nearly half of the transportation sector's nitrogen oxide emissions. Diesel trucks emit serious pollution at startup while idling and traveling at low speeds." Now, at the traffic report, GFI would have us believe that the majority of the trucks are gonna go to two ninety and the main street exit. So, not only is the high school gun, gonna get the emissions from the backside, because if you look at, if you do, um, a distance between point A and point B, between the warehouses and the high school, it's about two thousand feet, give or take a couple of feet. So, those trucks are actually gonna go from the backside of the high school all the way around to that set of lights where all those schools' children drive to, and they're gonna be suck, sucking up that air pollution as well. Again, these trucks are gonna be idling at that set of lights. So, I appreciate the fact that we're concerned about our water, I appreciate the fact that we're concerned about the noise, and we're concerned about the traffic. We're gonna be poisoning our kids. Can I, can I submit this or?
Certainly, you can, you can submit that. And sir, can you just state your name and address again?
Uh, my name is Ben, and I've been a resident here for twenty-four years.
What's the address?
What's the address, sir, that you're at?
He doesn't hear very well.
Sir.
What's your address?
What's your address? They're asking what your address is. Uh, what, so, what?
Could, could you ask, could you please tell us?
Candlewood Way.
I'm sorry?
Candlewood Way.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Hi there. Uh, Krista Dupre, Candlewood Way. Um, this is why a podium would also be helpful. May I have permission to play a very short audio?
I don't think that we have the capacity to, we don't have the capabilities of presenting audio.
Just in the microphone.
You wanna let her try?
I, I think we need to get some context of what this audio is, ma'am.
Um, it's from my backyard. That's what it is.
It's not gonna be accessible any to write them, because the caption is.
Okay. Since we did find out there was a peer review, I did have comments regarding not seeing the peer review, so I've had to change some of my notes. Um, in regards to the peer review, I ask hard consideration from the planning board not to have twenty-four-seven operations or tenant. That is, the current Worcester Sand and Stone starts at seven AM and ends at four PM, Monday through Saturday, and some holidays off, which is posted on their website. The residents even across Newton Pond, down Sewell Street, and up Holden Street towards Shrewsbury High can hear Worcester Sand and, uh, Stone trucks working onsite, dumping and filling, and also the grinding. We are thankful for Sundays and after four PM, when they are finished on busier days. These days, Worcester Sand and Stone do, does seem much busier. I'm confident most residents knew moving into the neighborhood that Worcester Sand and Stone existed or gravel previously, and we accepted their posted hours of operation. I will share my husband, who does do shift work, concluding nights, back in two thousand and seven, looking to move to town, I shared with him. I believe I found a house, but near a gravel pit. He stated, "Will I be able to sleep through it during the day?" I said yes, but with the windows closed. I respectfully ask GFI Partners, one sixty Holden Street, LCC, to keep this in mind for when they find a tenant, because how are people going to be sleeping at night with trucks operating? Babies, grandkids, elderly, or for those of us who get up and go to work the next day. Last correspondence with me on Tuesday, April second, uh, twenty-twenty-four, no tenant has been identified for either warehouse. Is that still hold true?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Looking for clarification, and I could have missed it in regards to the sound study, um, there was only one location of the long-term sound study, not multiple locations. So, I'm just curious how that all works in the sound world. When I was looking at the map, it posted the different locations of the sound study. So, I'm just curious on how that all works out. Sorry, I've gotta, you may have to turn.
No, it's okay. Not a problem. Um, so as I indicated, we set up one sound meter onsite.
Right.
To collect long-term measurements.
Mm-hmm.
We did that one week period last summer. Um, and then we did short-term measurements late at night at the four additional locations in the neighborhood. Um, and that's really to sort of calibrate that the long-term measurements are capturing the lowest sound emissions. Now, there's not really any big, huge discrepancy between the sources. If we did, then we would want to notify, note that and use those sound measurements at those particular locations.
Okay. But there's normally not multiple locations for these sound, long sound study?
That's correct.
It's usually only one?
There's one, right.
So, that's usually the standard?
That's the standard, right.
Okay. Um, the other thing I noted in the report, page thirteen, it did state that these were all predicted decibel levels for backup beepers that will range from twenty-six to forty-two dBA. Again, I understand. Again, I understand people have mentioned, but I had written this out earlier. Sensitive receptions, receptors' location in the surrounding neighborhood. Are tractor-trailer beepers being mandated to be louder for safety from the federal government? Just like cars are being mandated to have certain safety features. So, I am curious, backup beepers will be louder in the near future? Are they discussing that?
If anything, they're looking at trying to find ways to make them quieter.
Okay, that's good to hear. Okay. The report also states backup beepers are transient intermittent sources, not regulated, which we've all talked about. Well, I find this a bit more concerning, especially in an area I had hoped to play when it's fairly quiet at 6:00 PM. I'm curious to know, and my apologies if I didn't understand the sound study correctly, but if one backup beeper, what is the difference between two, four, 10, 50 trucks, all backup beeping at the same time? And I understand you can't add the decibels together. That I remember from the sound study report. You can't just magically add a lawnmower and a leaf blower together and say it's this loud. But the accumulation or all at once, that's what I'm curious of, of all of these trucks using that.
So, in our sound study, we had multiple backup alarms in, in, in our study as part of the site itself. And you're, you're right, you can't add them arithmetically together. Forty and forty doesn't equal eighty.
Yep.
Forty, so if you have two like sources that are emitting the same, it's a three-decibel increase in sound. So, if it's forty and forty, it's forty-three. If you add another source, then it's an official, I think it's five decibels over, it increases from there. So, you know, again, we included all those sound sources operating at simultaneously.
But how many?
How many? Like I said, there was four backup alarms.
So, that's four. But it's 100, what did we just determine, 187 truck days? Or 180? So, I, I'm not saying they're all going to back up at the same time, but I'm thinking there's a good chance of having 20, 25 trucks that will be pulling in and doing this.
If I might, Madam Chair, I, I think one of the purposes of peer review is to test the consultant, the developer's consultant is using standards and applying those standards in a fashion that's consistent in the practice that's being looked at. And I think that's the report you've already heard is, but I can stand corrected, you can hear from your own consultant on that, that the methodology utilized by Mr. Wallace is consistent with the practice as far as looking at sound anywhere. So, it's the extent that the suggestion is that whatever number is used, it's the wrong number. The real standard is whether it met the criteria for evaluating sound as evaluated or required by DEP and other, other regulatory boards that are measuring it. And I think that's what we heard early, is the methodology is consistent and appropriate.
Yeah, I do think one issue here is the criteria that applies to this project is not designed for the backup sound or for transient sound at all. You could assess it by that. And standardized methods have been used in the report to do that. But one thing that should be noted is what that method actually means. This is a standard way of doing things. But my, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, my understanding is that we have four trucks, one at each loading zone, and they are, we're assuming a beeper, basically one, there might be five minutes worth of beeping in the course of an hour. And then the methodology actually spreads that sound out over the hour and tells you the average level over that entire hour. So, if you're, you cannot make the claim that the methodology of this report is assessing, for instance, the comparison of the sound when it is occurring versus the ambient sound level. What it's assessing is an average hour period in which five minutes of four trucks occur compared to the ambient period. So, if there is a real concern that backup beeping is going to cause a problem in the neighborhood, it might be worth investigating a criteria that is appropriate for that. But there is no, Mass DEP does not cover that. There is no regulatory framework for us to rely on for this.
I would encourage that we actually look into that, especially speaking with residents from Northborough. Is there any type of repair, maintenance, cleaning permitted on-site to these trucks? Is that permitted by right with the bylaw? I don't know.
Say that one more time.
Is there any type of repair, maintenance, cleaning permitted on-site by the, by the trucks? To the, to the trucks, I should say.
Not looking to have a garage or repair garage, if that's what you're asking.
But even just a small, I don't know, general something?
I don't think we can permit that.
Okay. All right. And my apologies if I missed it in the map. Is there some type of sound barrier between the two warehouses? Because my concern is, and again, looking to the sound experts, of the sound bouncing between the two buildings. Whether that gets muffled or whether that's going to travel, I don't know. And that's what I'm curious on.
So, there are two sound barriers in between the two buildings for protection of the, from the loading dock activities?
The two, right, right smack in the middle?
Right, it's back in the middle.
Okay.
On the Clinton side of, of that. The model takes into account sound reflections off of the building. And depending on what the materials are, it could be absorptive or reflective. Because it's a warehouse building that's, you know, essentially, you know, metal-framed, it's probably going to have more reflection of sound. So, our model does include that, as far as how that sound might reflect off of the building. But then we would have to redesign, we'd have to design the barriers in such a way to make sure that we're getting those reflections, which we did in the model itself.
Okay. And that, are you proposing, I believe I saw on the slides, that for additional sound barriers on all sides now? Not just the original two sides? Because I believe they.
We have two barriers, one to the north by Flag, by Flag Road, and then the other one down to the south.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, but, so then nothing along Sewell and nothing along one, one, uh, Clinton Street?
Except for those two that we talked about between the two, between the two.
Right, right. Okay. Again, I, I guess someone else touched on this. Who is the reporting authority for when there are noise violations? Is it a monetary fine, hours of operation, non-compliance? Would there be sound monitors on property to record any of this? I know some businesses do not permit, say, using a horn on, except for you absolutely have to, not hey, honk and hey buddy, nice to see you kind of thing. But especially during restrictive hours, the idling was spoken on. So, would drivers be permitted to sleep on-site? No. Okay. Because that was my question, because if it's a refrigeration truck, where they'd be keeping their truck warm, and would even pets be permitted on-site? Because obviously, long-haul truckers, we thank them for all of our goods, do travel with pets. Something to think about, especially with the Aquifer and the rain gardens. If pets are on-site, they probably need a place to go. Lastly, in regards to sound, um, let's see. I think, I actually think that was it. I do have a couple other comments in regards to lighting. And then I'm sure other people have questions, but I did have a couple other questions.
If we're trying to keep this to the sound and the sustainability.
I thought, I thought it was lighting tonight, too. It's not lighting tonight?
No.
Okay, that's fine. All good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll come back up after others. Thank you.
Are there other comments this evening?
Hello. Gretchen Nolan, 20 Barsworth Road. This is about sound. I remember last summer, July, it rained every weekend. Was this study done when it was raining?
No, it was not.
Okay. So, my second part, what happens to the sound when it is raining?
Well, it tends to be higher.
Higher, okay.
Because, and that's why we don't do measurements of ambient conditions when there's precipitation.
All right. One more question. Is this building going to have a metal roof?
I believe what was described was a TPO roof, which I believe is, is a rubberized roof that is able to, that is more efficient, energy-efficient, and is.
Much better for the rain, too.
Accept, yes, exactly. And also able to accept solar panels at, at a later date, if, if chosen, if so chosen.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions this evening? All right.
I have a follow-up. Can I do a follow-up?
Sure.
Thanks. Andy Barnes, still at 115 Clinton. The, I haven't moved yet. I really don't want to. I have no, people are talking about property value. I have no interest in moving. That's my problem. I, I was wondering about these, I, I'm looking, I keep looking at the map, and there's many, many of these things that are put out that are, I don't know what they are. Are they, are they, I'm, I'm not sure what these things are that are, that are measuring that are on the map. Are they measuring topography? Are they measuring sound? What are they, I don't understand.
Which, which?
Uh, all the, all the waypoints on the map, like there's very many, like, like you measure in front of each of the closest residences.
So, you, so the, the, the black and white circles?
Yeah. Are they devices?
No, they're just receivers in the model. They're mo, they're just.
They're modeled. They're not a piece of hardware, which is how you are able to model a scenario that doesn't have the massive Half a Ski Ward mountain there, because it's all virtual.
It's all virtual.
That was my question. Thank you.
Follow-up to? Paula Tebow at 121 Clinton Street. I just wanted to follow up to find out what type of mitigation there could be with regards to the idling. I do work remote, so I work from home. My beautiful home office faces Clinton Street. So, I will look out into the parking lot of what would be the property. Currently, at J&amp;M, trucks and tractors come there every lunch and idle for more than five minutes every day. I sent the planning board some pictures of the trucks right in front of our driveway. They sit there and idle more than five minutes. So, I think if this is going to be approved, there will be.
I appreciate that. That is not on the subject property that we're discussing this evening. I understand that it is, it is.
So, it's related, I'm sorry, I should have prefaced, because of the increase in truck traffic that will be coming from these warehouses. They are going to do the same thing that the current property trucks and tractors do, which is come to the store during their lunch hour or leaving the warehouses. So, I am concerned with the increase in that and what mitigation could be done.
I mean, I, I don't, Louise, I don't know if there's specific parts of the, the code that talk about.
So, I, I think post-construction, if this is approved and we get complaints through the planning department about trucks on the property itself, that could be something we can talk to the applicants about and having them monitor if it's on the street. I don't know that we would be able to have any follow-up. That would probably be a.
Yeah, so I think that just points to the idea that the nice slide saying that trucks aren't allowed to idle for five minutes is really not going to benefit a lot of people that are in the neighborhood and the emissions that will come from those trucks. And also, it sounds like there is no sound barrier for all the properties along Clinton Street. So, with the trucks entering in and out at nighttime, breaking and whatnot, that there's going to be no sound protection for the residents on the Clinton side. Is that accurate?
As outlined on the plans that was presented this evening, there's two sound barriers that are on the Clinton Street side of the facility that are for the purposes of acting as a sound barrier for the.
Loading dock.
Thank you, my words, for the loading dock area.
Yeah, I understood that. Thank you so much. It was just the, the trucks coming in and out of the driveways and the sound protections, which it sounds like there is none.
Those have not been proposed.
Okay, thank you.
There are no other questions or comments this evening. Louise, can we just confirm next meeting? Yes, ma'am.
I do have more, but my question is, is will there be, first of all, a time to ask about other topics that we have discussed?
That's what I was just.
Fabulous, so I will hold those questions. But in regards to the noise and idling, I will share from other towns, as well, I have pictures of trucks in Boylston, West Boylston. They park during the day and they sleep and they idle. So, the, the planning board, you know, or the board of selectmen, I don't know who might want to take that up. I know there was no parking past 11 on roadways during, around in Shrewsbury, but during the day. I have a photo from a tra, a tractor-trailer that was making delivery to a neighbor. And if that truck finds my street, guess where he's going to park all day? Taking a nap all day, no doubt about it. And I'm right by the pond.
If there are idling, that might be a Mass DEP avenue for you in general?
So, we're going to have to call all the time for every truck that's idling in the area. That, that's a major concern. And I know that's a major concern in Northborough and some other towns I've spoken to. Major, major concern of the trucks that are queuing up, pulling over. It's just some food for thought, especially because people have talked about the climate initiative that Shrewsbury has, as well as noise, idling, and so forth. So, I want to bring that to your attention. As well as, I will say, just to touch on of the noise and the idling, absolutely, I have a video of a truck, tractor-trailer cutting through Holden Street and taking a right north on Route 70. Tractor-trailers absolutely are going to be cutting through onto Holden Street. And one went down Sewell, which is not wide enough for a single yellow line. Thank you.
Idling can also be enforced by the police department on public roadways.
All right, Louise, this is not our last hearing this evening for, for this particular property. Can you remind me what the next hearing is?
I can make a suggestion.
Sure.
I, I think since we've been going through this process, the consultants have been exchanging review letters and responses to those, which are finding their way to portal as they're getting completed. But it would seem that it would make sense for the next meeting to bring traffic and engineering back to be here. Make sure you've had a chance to see those, see if there's any open remaining issues from staff or the board on that. Answer any limited questions with regard to the public in those particular domains. And, you know, try to basically wrap up whatever might be open issues as part of that meeting. So, I thought would be, we'd bring, I, I wouldn't plan to bring this to Wallace again. I, I think you've heard enough tonight, and, you know, unless there's some specific follow-up, then, you know, I wouldn't plan on that. But we'd bring our engineers and, and traffic consultants. You would, with the trade of information, hopefully you'll have clean letters as, as we know them from your peer review consultants, and we can summarize that as quickly as we can and try to answer any last questions.
Mr. Dunnehy, that sounds like a, a great plan in terms of, I think those are really the, where the majority of the questions seem to be coming is related to traffic and engineering. So, I think that, that does make a great deal of sense to allow for another hearing, one final hearing to kind of address all of those outstanding questions that are, are out there, as well as provide opportunity for any peer review items and other received documents from your consultants to be uploaded onto the town website and posted for, for the public to review. So, thank you for that. Oh, Mr. DePaolo, do you have a question, comment?
I, I remember my question, so I'll ask that first. On the, on the, on the sound study, the baseline on the decibels, the decibel levels you use is the quietest time of the, that came up during the test?
That's correct.
Okay. So, is that usually at night or in the early? Okay, so is that usually at night or in the early morning?
Yes, they tend to be, what we measured out at the site was on a Sunday morning, 1:00 AM and at 4:00 AM, we measured a 32.
Okay, so when you're making the comparisons of the, of the noise from the operation, are you saying you're comparing it to, lack of a better term, the still of the night?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm just curious why it's not measured against the current conditions during the day?
Because during the daytime, the sound levels are higher, the ambient sound conditions. And so then you would have a higher threshold for the mass DEP noise policy demonstration.
Oh, to measure it?
Well, yeah, to demonstrate compliance, when we did, you do the measuring to establish the ambient conditions and we have all those measurements for day and night. But you would be measuring, you would be comparing the project sounds added to the background of, those higher backgrounds would have a higher threshold.
Okay, so doing it the way you're doing it actually is stricter, more conservative?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, that answers that question. Ms. Holstrom, I do have a comment about the next meeting. I've been talking to Mr. McGoldrick and Mr. Mizikar and the people from GFI about actually spending most of that next meeting really going over stormwater and the aquifer protection, because we think it's important that everybody understand what's happening on the site now and what is going to happen after, when the, when the, if the building is built out, when it's built out, what's going to happen to the water post-development as compared to what's happening now. So I, we're anticipating it, it's going to take more than 15 minutes. So just keep that in mind as, as Dunne, as we go, as we go through trying to figure out the schedule for the next agenda. But we really wanted to take the time to do a deep dive on the, on the water issue.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mo. All right, so I think we do have a plan for the next, the next hearing.
Yeah, I think we'll still plan to bring our traffic consultant, we can focus on the stormwater. We talked about stormwater at a high level when, on our kickoff meeting, we spent a good part of the February meeting. We'll, we'll bring that back, we'll try to make sure that, we'll think about better ways to present it maybe and try to make it a little bit clearer and try to get that absolutely, since the special permit, the discretionary portion of your jurisdiction relates solely to the Aquifer District. Just to remind the board, the use is a use permitted as of right, subject to regulatory site plan approval, trying to fix the site, not necessarily try to fix everything in the world. So we'll do that, but I think we'll bring the traffic consultant too, because I know there's traffic issues out there that people still want to get some clarification on and we'll hopefully have time to be able to do it at the May meeting.
All right, wonderful, thank you, appreciate that, thank you guys. Oh, can I get, can I get a motion to continue this public hearing to the May 2nd meeting?
Continue the meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of Mr. Kastner?
Aye.
Mr. Alardi?
Yes.
Mr. Rao?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
And Ms. Holstrom, aye. Thank you. Give everyone a moment. Filter out.
Bill's school was worse.
All right, next, we have a couple of items left on the agenda, so if I can just ask if other people have comments and whatnot, just please bring them out into the hallway. I'm going to turn it back over to the chair.
Wait till everybody leaves. All right, so with respect to the next agenda item, zoning warrant articles, annual town meeting 2024, we're going to hold that till the next, till our May 2nd 2024 hearings, okay. All right, next on Puritan Road, anybody have any questions on that?
I didn't know you were going to continue on the zoning, or the warrant article.
Yeah, I, I You, you, we discussed this earlier, but you might not have been in the room, so what, if you want to come up and ask a question, we'll try to answer it to the best of our ability.
I'm here, I might as well.
Yeah, okay.
I have a comment on it, Greg Richards, Hickory Drive, I just, the, it's article, I think, 44, it's on the MBTA zoning, and it was just a comment on, question as to why Shrewsbury chose not to submit a pre-adoption review on the actual overlay district. And the reason behind that is, when I looked at the article and it states, the text says that the intent describing that transit overlay district is to encourage smart growth development in accordance with MGL 40R and then satisfy the requirements of MGL 40A 3A and contribute to the housing growth goals. The satisfying of 3A is not explicit as, there's 45 towns who have, you know, gone through that pre-adoption review, but 10, you know, at least, a lot of them have come back with comments from the executive office of housing and livable communities. So it's almost impossible for the town meeting members to vote on that article that would satisfy, because you don't know it satisfies the rules until the state reviews our proposal. So what, if we're going to change zoning law or our zoning in that town meeting article, I don't understand why we wouldn't have at least got the state review to make sure that what we're proposing is going to be in compliance. If that makes sense?
Definitely makes sense. I guess it would My thought is, is that we're probably running short on time and this is how the sausage is made, as they say. Not, it's probably, sir, your comments are appropriate and in a perfect world, it would have probably been done that way. But that's not how the town approached it. Although we did have many meetings to discuss the MBTA zoning, which the public's input was encouraged. I, I don't, I think you're correct, I don't think we engaged in that pre-review.
No, we didn't, I mean, because I got all the data, this comes off the MBTA site, so yeah, it's just, I mean, based off how they're responding and I guess most of them will respond, you know, the responses from the state was, you know, they actually specifically make the comment that the EO HLC recommends that the town addresses the issues outlined before putting the district to legislative vote. The legislative vote is the town meeting.
Correct.
So the authority who's, which is providing the guidelines and regulating this is stating to these towns, 45 at least, you know, that went through there, and there's only been three towns, just to be clear, out of 177 that are compliant, 12 that actually submitted at the end of last year. None of those have actually officially gone, because four months later, the state still hasn't approved any. So I don't know about running out of time, I think we're kind of, you still have the October meeting, I just think it's premature to put on the town article in May. I guess a proposal that is most likely going to have a lot of comments back from the state and we've already, I mean, the way I read the article, unless I'm wrong, you're changing the language of our zoning in this article regardless of if the state agrees and comply, that they're in compliance. Is that accurate?
Remember, the AG gets to review the, our warrant article, presuming that it passes town meeting. The town clerk submits the warrant articles, zoning warrant articles to the attorney general, who reviews them on a variety of compliance standards. And sometimes they get spit back, sometimes they get approved. And sometimes there's curative action, which the town can take to ensure that the warrant article is passed by town meeting, gets blessed by the AG.
Okay, so But if she, let's just say, in that situation, that they could, if they approve some of the language and still come back and say that there's non-compliance of part of 3A, does the town meeting, does that still have to go back through town meeting, the changes that they recommended?
I, I think that the attorney general can, I think most recently, we had a solar bylaw that town meeting passed, a solar bylaw and battery storage bylaw that town meeting passed, that the AG found certain aspects of the bylaw objectionable, because it ran afoul of I'm not going to say it was anti-competitive, but thought it ran afoul of the zoning bylaw, the, the solar friendliness that the general law is granted to solar projects.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess my, I'll leave it just one comment. To me, I think it's, you know, in the best interest or better interest, let's say, of the citizens, at least the town meeting members, to be able to vote on something that we know is in compliance, because the only reason it's mine and planning that this exists is because of a state mandate and to become compliant. We wouldn't have done that without the state mandate saying that we have to create an overlay district. So if we're going to ask to vote on a, that district for that purpose, we should have, I think, done more due diligence to ensure that, per the state, and having that process of being able to do a pre-adoption review, we should have done that prior to providing this and bringing it to town meeting, that's my comment.
Thank, thank, thank you for your input. Any, any other comments from the public? Members, okay. Next, we'll move on to Puritan Road acceptance. And I assume that
This was brought by our town engineer to us, that
They've done the layout.
It's up to their standard and
Now, this is just the realignment of Route 20 and Puritan Road that kind of eliminated the westerly access from Puritan Road.
I believe so.
Okay. All right. And we've, you want us to vote on that
To recommend.
Recommendation tonight? Okay. And the, the town engineering department has, Louise has reviewed the plans, and this was something that we did internally, the town did internally, I think in conjunction with mascot and, all right. So
Make a motion
Any of the board members have any comments?
No comments.
No comments? Mo, any comments on that?
Nope, all set.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any comments on Puritan Road, street acceptance? Okay, if there are no comments, I would entertain a motion to recommend the Puritan Road street acceptance to town meeting.
Make a motion to recommend the Puritan Road acceptance to town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Rao, okay. I guess I'll poll the board members, Dino, do you
Approved.
Approved? Perna?
In favor.
Julie?
Yes.
Mo?
In favor.
And I'm in favor as well of that recommendation. Okay, new business. And this is discuss and vote on the bond reduction for Falcon Farm subdivision. I know that Mr. DePaolo and I were a little confused, because we forgot that a substantial amount of time had elapsed from when we voted on the bond and when the applicant came in to actually post the bond. But we allowed the planning department to hold the covenant release in escrow. And that was for how many lots, that was for like
Six plus the model homes, so seven in total.
Okay, and there's a total of nine lots in the subdivision?
Correct.
All right. So what are we looking, what are we looking for, for a bond reduction? Could that, did you hand that to us, Louise?
Sure, so the applicant of the subdivision went back to, has done work to the roadway and utilities and infrastructure, has gone, requested the bond reduction through the town engineer. They reviewed that and came back with, it was at $268,000, reduced to $207,900 is the new total for the bond reduction.
So he's looking for 200 and
$7,900.
And when did, when did the applicant come in with the bond? When did, when did, when did the applicant come in and provide the town with the bond?
The actual, just within the last month.
I guess I'm okay with it, but I don't think I want to make this a monthly event on our agenda. I don't know, that's, that's just the way I feel about it as acting chair, maybe the real chair feels otherwise. I kind of sense this could be a pattern. So that's my thoughts. But I guess I would entertain the reduction in the bond as read by Louise. I'd entertain a motion to reduce the bond for the Falcon Farms Farm subdivision.
Before we do that, Mr. Chair, is there a way, if we, we do this bond reduction this evening, but could we kind of put together some type of schedule and say, like, once you hit 25%, 50%, 75% so that it is not something that is happening on a regular basis like this? Is that something that we can Talk to Mr. McGoldrick about that.
I, I just, you know, he came in, came in within 30 days and he's going to, I just kind of sense it. I don't know whether a schedule or not, it's just that You know, again, I had concerns about the bridge and the crossing and everything else. And just because we released the bond, it doesn't mean that we have to accept the road. I was kind of clear on that when we discussed the subdivision approval. Okay, so I guess I would entertain a motion with the caveat that I would entertain this bond reduction, but also that we look into the, a schedule of some sort for the applicant, looking for further bond reductions.
I'll make that motion as outlined by the chair.
Second.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Mr. Rao. And I guess if I could poll the members about the bond reduction, Dino?
More approval.
Perna?
In favor.
Julie? Okay, Mo?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor as well. Do we have something that we're going to sign tonight?
Not for the bond reduction.
No?
Mm-mm.
Okay. All right, and discuss and vote on a lot release All right, and discuss and vote on a lot release for two, is it lot number two? Or is it two Falcon Farm, which is different than lot two, I think it's different, right?
It is different, and I think that was a clerical error. Initially, it was just two Falcon, which is lot nine.
Okay.
But they are looking for release, covenant release from the seven that were released back in June, twenty twenty-three, that you voted on, and just to have that.
They're looking for an individual? So is this an additional lot, in addition to the seven?
Nope, the same, but since it's in the covenant, they're looking to sell these lots and don't want that. And this is still a part of the covenant, so I think it was-
It was released, right?
Right, but it was never, I don't think, Mr. McGoldrick, we had anything signed for those releases at the time.
We signed the covenant release and you held it in escrow?
I don't think there was a signature.
Okay, do we have one now?
To sign tonight?
Yeah. Okay. So i- if this is just belt and suspenders, because we've previously released lot nine?
Correct.
Okay, what, back in June, then I guess I would entertain a motion to release lot nine again, because the bond is in place a- at the Falcon Farm subdivision.
Make a motion to release the lot nine.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Dino, I guess I'll poll, poll the board members, Dino?
Move approve.
Okay, Perna?
Feel it.
Julie?
Yes.
Mo?
Favor.
And I'm in favor as well, and if we have that document, we can sign it.
So, Mr. Werdelike, so we all set on the other six now?
I, I think, I, I, I just think that we're gonna have to sign a document, right? All right, so that document will be ready?
Momentarily.
Okay, for the six? But that just con-
That just confirms what you already did.
Did, okay. All right.
Are we gonna identify the two that aren't getting released?
The two that aren't getting released are?
Are lot one and lot two.
Lot one and lot two?
Not released.
Are not released. So, but we, all right. But there will be no confusion that we've released lot two based on the fact that lot two, two Falcon Drive is an agenda item. Okay, got it. And review the upcoming M B T A informational sessions.
Two more coming up, April nineteenth is a drop-in session from ten to twelve, and which I believe will be online remotely, which you can email planning@shrewsburyma.gov. Before that, Google Meet, and then May fifteenth is a drop-in session as well, in person, at Town Hall.
Okay. And we don't have, there's nothing for us to vote on, that's just informational.
Correct.
And we have no old business, I'm assuming?
No.
And correspondence, again, I have a conflict, but just in the interest of moving the mo, the meeting along, we have correspondence regarding one forty-two Clinton Street about her comments, questions via email, collected and provided to the planning board, I assume is, they're voluminous.
Yes.
And I assume that they're available for anybody to review on-
At request.
At request, they're not on our drive.
They're, they're on the drive.
They're on the drive.
They're on the drive.
They're on the drive, but they're also up at the planning office.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and I guess I would, at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Julie has moved, Dino has seconded, and I'm gonna have to poll the board members, Dino?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well. So this concludes this evening's public hearings, thank you for tuning in.